So, welcome everybody. Thank you for attending and welcome to this meeting of the Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee. The meeting is open to the public today. However, we have not received any questions from the public and we have a number of people presenting, but no public questions. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the meeting. There's no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and as usual, the assembly point is in Tudor Square. Perhaps the members of the committee would like to introduce themselves. I'll go clockwise.
councillor Curtis Crossland, member for Dayton Ward.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesmore Ward.
Henry Notte, member for Hillsborough Ward.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Hi, I'm Tom Hearn, I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
councillor Ben Miskell for Park and Arbuthnot and also deputy chair of this committee.
Minesh Parrot, councillor for Crixton Crosspool Ward.
councillor Jane Dunn.
And I'm councillor Martin Smith from Doran Totley and chair of the committee. We have a number of people presenting today, I'll ask them to introduce themselves when we get to that part of the agenda. We're all here, so there have been no apologies for absence. Likewise, we don't have anything which requires the exclusion of the public and press unless anybody knows differently. So declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business today? Okay. Next item is minutes of previous meeting. We're asked to approve or amend as a correct record the minutes of the meeting on the 22nd of February. You may have to help me out here because that was the one I couldn't be at and Ben was in the jet. So are there any comments on the minutes, please? councillor Masters.
Chair, page 10. I mean, 7.5. I mean, it wasn't just the impact of the CAS that we discussed, it was the impact of policies on a number of highways issues arising. So could it be, could somehow be amended to reflect that? Evaluation of all roads affected, wasn't just by CAS.
Yeah, councillor Miskell was chair in the meeting, just indicated that that was correct and so is councillor Dunn. Okay, so if we can correct that, please. Any other items on the minutes? If not subject to that one amendment, I'll take that as approval, thank you very much. Item six is public questions and petitions. We have no petitions or public questions today. So next item is the work programme. Is Amanda here today?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the work programme is in the supplementary agenda pack of page one. Page four details the amendments and we have new items that have been populated for the meetings going forward post-election, so those are there for approval today. And if there's any questions, Diana, I'm sure will be pleased to answer.
Thank you, Amanda. Any, councillor Crossland?
Thank you. It's about the LGBT quarter aspect of the future work programme. I know this entire committee system has been a bit of a learning curve for us and I know our offices are some of the most overworked yet, delivered some fantastic results for the city. So it not being on the work programme, not having a date is understandable, but I think it would be good for us to maybe push for it in the new municipal year. I know we've had informal discussions as well, so it is moving forward, I just kind of want something concrete to go forward.
Thanks councillor, yes, I totally understand that. We did agree to have an informal members' session around the night time economy, which we can absolutely do in June. I think once we know what the committee, the new committee structure is going to be, if there's any changes on the back of the review, we can absolutely schedule a report within the first two meetings to go as well. It might be if we're doing one on night time economy, it could be cleaner and come to EDS. I think it's because we're talking about the quarter and the physical elements as well that the TRC element comes into it. So I think if we have that session to break it up a little bit, but I agree, we'll get a date scheduled and commit to a members' workshop in June.
Thank you for that, yeah, definitely. I think it's also about pride as well. I think the council needs to take a bit of a leadership role on the pride aspect of the motion that was referred to the, to this committee.
Thanks Curtis, yeah, that's something I know we've spoken about. This week I've already met with the events team to look at what our plans are for pride this year and going forward. So we'll be drawing up a number of options to come to councillors before June, so you'll see that in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Anything else on the work programme? councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you. It was regarding that, for council I did bring up some issues to do with LGBT, well, I mean councillor Miskell did, and I do sit on the hate crime board, so I'm well aware of, you know, really supporting of LGBT quarter. However, I think we need to be working side by side with communities on this to make sure that A, we keep to our remit and we're working alongside them on that. So I'd just like to stress that because there have been some issues. So I think we need to include members of the hate crime board so we're not duplicating work, as well as making sure that communities are doing at the same time.
Certainly, there won't be anything proposed without consultation, so I'll note that that's a good board to come to, to kind of have early discussions with, thank you.
Thanks guys, that's really good feedback. Anything else other than that? Minutes, okay, work programme, okay, fine. The, so we move on to one of the substantive items today, item eight, which is employment and skills strategy development with inclusion of green jobs and skills. So who's presenting that today? Diana, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Martin.
Sorry Tom, did you indicate?
Sorry, yeah, just for the full transparency, I realise I should have declared that I work for the University of Sheffield, which is named as one of the partner organisations in the governance board, so just wanted to put that.
Okay, good spot, thank you Tom. Point, Diana, over to you.
Thank you. I have got a colleague Matthew here as well from the employment and skills team, if any technical detailed questions, Matthew's going to help me out as well. But in terms of presenting the report today, really pleased to be able to bring this to committee before kind of the break over the election period to get this work started. The report does a number of things really. First of all, it identifies the landscape, the current landscape, kind of from a national policy, regional policy and local policy perspective, highlighting the work that's been done by Simca on their emerging skills strategy, which is just the consultation so far, and the work that the chambers have been leading within South Yorkshire around the Elsip, which we're really supportive of. However, through conversations this year with Sheffield Partners, it's been raised that we need a space for kind of Sheffield organisations to really come together, to collaborate, to identify priorities and to take leadership in employment and skills in Sheffield, to really kind of be a national beacon for that area. There's a lot of ambition in the partners for this. So the paper proposes that we formalise an employment and skills board and that that group is charged by this committee in developing a new skills strategy for the city. They will do the work but feedback to this EDS committee for the decision. So to be clear, that group would not be a decision-making group, it's an advisory and a collaborative group. The reason that I think partnership is so important in this space is actually the biggest amounts of budgets and the biggest levers sit with people other than the council in this space. So the universities, the colleges, DWP, they have huge budgets, resources around these areas and a group like this working to an agreed city strategy could really mean that we can start to shape resources and collaborate in new ways that we haven't been doing for a while, in a really proactive way. So we're keen to see that partnership board kind of formalised and the link to this committee established. The paper also suggests that we do have a new employment and skills strategy. We haven't had one at Sheffield for a while and although the South Yorkshire and Merrill Combined Authority are developing a skills strategy, we still feel like Sheffield needs to have its own as a core city, but we will make sure that it dovetails with everything that Simca are doing, we will use their evidence base and make sure that our strategy is really kind of showing how we will lead and develop some of the areas that are prioritised for them, as well as looking what might be an issue in Sheffield. Because although there are some kind of South Yorkshire and city level issues, actually when it comes to employment and skills, it's quite localised, some of the things that we need to tackle, it's actually about neighbourhoods and wards and communities that we need to get into. So it's really important to have both the local and the kind of the regional and the national elements on the strategy. So we really think it's important that we develop our own strategy going forwards. In order to do that properly, we know that's going to take a number of months. So in this paper, working with the partners that are listed in the paper, we've put forward a number of key areas that partners have raised with me, we know through the evidence, are kind of like an initial starting point of areas that we could start to look at and just give us a little bit of grounding in the intermediate before we get the skills strategy, because there are funding opportunities, shared prosperity fund for example, and other things that we might want to bid for or develop within that period. And these initial elements will just give us a bit of a starting point. Not that they are setting stone or enough necessarily, so it's just a kind of a starting point and a bit of intermediate policy guidance whilst we develop the strategy, which will be much fuller and more consulted on set of evidence. So I'm happy to go through the detail areas if that's helpful, but the purpose of the paper today is to get your agreement as committee to agree to set up that governance board as a kind of an advisory board to this committee and charge it with the job of developing that strategy that would then come back to this committee to be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you Diana. Can I just take chair's prerogative and ask a question? Why haven't we had an employment and skills strategy before? It sounds obvious. Is there a reason why we didn't do it before?
We have had employment and skills strategies in the past, but the last one I think was well before, well before Covid kind of expired, then we had one in the making as Covid hit. But actually Covid, Brexit and a number of other things have completely changed the labour market, so some of the priorities and elements that were in the draft work that we'd done don't really stand anymore. So I think we need to definitely look post-Covid, post-Brexit, sustainability, there's a lot of new kind of pressures. So it means that the space is right now really for that new strategy.
Thank you, that's clear. So are there any questions? councillor Miskell?
And thank you so much, Chair and Diana, for the overview of arrangements, I think it's really appreciated. You know, it's quite clear that it is going to be an advisory board, which I think is really helpful and it's really important, isn't it, that we work in partnership with organisations across the city in order to be able to develop our economic policy. It was really assuring that actually final decisions about that strategy would come back to this committee. Would it be possible just to take an opportunity just to kind of run us through practically how we would envisage that to happen and how the board would work in concert with us here in Sheffield City Council as the democratically elected decision-makers with regards to economic development in the city?
Yeah, no problem at all. Initially, we would put together a bit of a specification in terms of what we want the employment and skills strategy to do. We would test that back with members, probably informally rather than at a formal meeting just for expediency of time. Then we would put together a task group that would be made up of some of the members of the employment and skills board to kind of take forward the work on that. Through any of the consultation and the shaping, we will run members' sessions with yourself and with other members across the council and other committees, because it does have some kind of cross-cutting elements to it. And as a first draft is developed, I suggest we bring a draft formally to the EDS committee, take any kind of comments and consultation after that point and then the final one would come back here for adoption as well. It might be that we want to also take it to S and R to be adopted because it might have that cross-cutting nature. But I would imagine certainly kind of members being involved in the development of it as well as the kind of signing off of it.
Thank you. So was it councillor Notte or councillor Turpin indicating that, I was a bit confused? Uh, councillor Notte.
Thank you Chair. As well as developing a better skills base locally for emerging markets and developing industries such as retrofitting and green energy, we also have a skills shortage in traditional sectors created by things like Brexit and the removal of the nursing bursary by central government. Will the strategy be able to do anything that will help us as a local authority plug these gaps that have been created by national policy?
Yes, the aim is absolutely to work in those spaces and I think there's short, medium and long-term interventions that are needed there. So in the short term, we have things like sector skills academies that work particularly with sectors where they've got shortages and might need to come in. In the medium term, it might be about reskilling and working with providers to provide that reskilling. In the long term though, I think it's a different conversation with businesses in these sectors about taking a long-term view on kind of developing their workforce, so looking at entry-level apprenticeships, maybe graduates and building and investing in their own workforce going forward. So I think they're complex issues, some of those things, and need multiple actions at short, medium and long term, but certainly an area that the board has got their eye on and got some kind of actions prepared to kind of think about as well as putting the strategy.
Thanks. Okay, I've got councillor Masters next and then I'll go to councillor Dunn.
Thank you Chair. I mean, sort of reading through the whole document, the emphasis seems to be either on the high quality, you know, sort of at high skilled jobs, graduate level and upwards, and that seems to be the focus of the board and the council up till now, sort of has got a stated strategy to help the disadvantage, whatever that disadvantage means. Now, I'm a bit concerned about what happens to those that fall between those two stools. I know there's nods to how their skills will be developed, but I'd like to be assured that there is some sort of positive strategy to upskill everybody rather than sort of just focus on the two extreme ends. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I think that's a fair reflection, actually. I think we tend to go into where some of the gaps are and so the focus in the early discussions with the board has been around those that are missed from mainstream provision and the gaps and the shortages around the high skills. That middle bit is so important and actually I think that's where there might be a lot of provision, but it's fragmented, it's not employer-facing and it's not individual-facing. So I think that's actually where we need to do a lot of system work and make sure we're collaborating better. So it's about ways of working in there as well as I think progression routes for people when they're in work. So I think that's a fair challenge and something I'll take back to the group and hopefully we'll see strengthened in the strategy as it comes forward. Do you want to add anything to that, Matthew?
Not especially, other than to say that various aspects of the work we've been doing for some time have been developing so that if you like, progression routes are clear to people who are in entry-level jobs are able to move up, thereby opening the space for people coming through. And similarly, as Diana was just referencing, there's been increasingly close work with employers, especially on a sectoral basis, working with sectors which have a lot of potential for growth, to upskill their workforce, their existing workforce, as well as clearing those spaces at the bottom end.
Thank you, but sort of you've actually reinforced my concerns because you said entry level upwards and I'm concerned about those who are beyond that, you know, already because they seem to be overlooked in so many ways and they're the ones with huge potential but they're maybe stuck and they don't know how to move forward, whereas those sort of who are disadvantaged, there's a lot of support mechanisms in place, those who sort of want to start up, something that the document really explains well, how to sort of, you know, support startups, new businesses to take things forward. So it is this middle band who are there already because I know there's progression routes for those on the entry level. I was just clarifying what I was trying to establish, thank you.
So you were talking about kind of level two moving to level three and four, yeah. And the data does show actually that we have got a gap of people moving from level two to level three, that's something that we're working with the MCA on as well, as well as kind of skills providers, so yeah, take that point, thank you Barbara.
I apologise if I wasn't sufficiently clear there. I had intended to emphasise that there's work going on with existing employers to work with their existing workforce to support that progression as well.
Thank you, it was just, it's sort of nodded to in the document, I just wanted it sort of embedded in the document.
Thank you, next we've got councillor Dunn.
Thank you, thank you Diana. A couple of points, you mentioned earlier about making sure that we worked and the council in our communities and I know I bring up constantly in this committee about the North East, which is extremely deprived and councillor Masters has actually highlighted, you know, highlighted that if we are going to develop a strategy that is going to hit the ground running, I'm picking up on what councillor Masters said, it's not just about those that are at the bottom, it is about upskilling. Because we have seen the devastating impact of all the cuts, we've seen all the strikes today, I've driven past five on the way in just from Brum Hill, so people are going to be wanting to be upskilled. So how are we going to work with our local area committees? Because what we don't want to do is decide what's happening, then take it into the local area committees and then they want to talk about it for a year. We've got to bring them alongside, so I'd like to know with that, you've also mentioned how fragmented the funding is and we all know that doesn't help us as a city build a strategy moving forward, because some of it has got to be influenced by business, some by education, some by the mayor's office and some, it's a very small amount, is council funding. Do we have a map of that? And I feel that has always been the issue with this fragmentation of, you know, local authority and how we pull everything together, is that we make sure that we're not duplicating, that we're not working in silos and then we are going to get more bang for our buck basically, both economically and actually help with a lot of socially economic problems that so many, that actually are across the city now, not just isolated in one place. And I think those strengths today, as you've seen, that junior doctors can earn more making a coffee, for instance, it's, this is something that's impacting across the whole city.
Thanks for those comments, really welcome and I agree with them in the majority, to be honest. I think that the way that the city and actually even the region at the moment operate is very funding-led and it is a complex landscape in employment and skills that kind of forces you into that. So I think part of the rationale for having a Sheffield strategy and a strong South Yorkshire one as well is to move away from just that funding-led approach and actually be an outcome-led in terms of what we want to achieve and then using a range of funding that we can get our hands on to kind of deliver against that strategy. So we have started mapping, we've mapped all of the governance that exists and we are starting to map programmes. So at the shadow board that we've put together with partners, we're already starting to share what are the key programmes that each of the partners have run in to highlight where there's duplication or actually just ability to collaborate. So I think that's going to help having that board there where we're learning about, partners are learning from each other in terms of what's on the ground there and developing going forward. So we can actually try to map the funding landscape as well, bring that back to the committee as part of kind of the strategic work as well, if that's helpful. It is a bit of a movable feast, but certainly we've got a few key elements that we can describe to people, so we can do that absolutely. In terms of the LAX, absolutely happy to commit to go into the LAX as part of the consultation and the engagement around this employment and skills strategy. Totally agree, it has to be owned locally as well as at kind of city and national level. And here again, that needing to strengthen, it's actually in there at number seven, so upskilling and reskilling the workforce, but I feel like that needs to be strengthened from the comments today, so take that on board from committee, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, the comments there about moving away from a funding-led approach, that's very insightful. So next, we've got councillor Hunt and then we'll go to councillor Turpin.
Thanks Chair, thanks Diana for the presentation. Couple of points, first, we gave approval to set up a more representative business board at this committee a couple of meetings ago and that was partly in recognition of the fact that I think some of the boards have been the usual faces, shall we say. I just, I'm looking at this sort of list here and I just want to make sure, seek reassurance and I guess, that this is going to be as representative of the city as it really needs to be, if this is going to be an employment and skills strategy that really addresses the needs of everybody in this city and every employer in this city. So your sort of thoughts on that would be useful. And then secondly, when it comes to the emerging priority areas that are listed in the report, absolutely there's nothing there that, you know, I think any of us around the table would say shouldn't be in there, but reading them, they don't come together yet in a vision for what this board and what this committee needs to bring together to develop that high wage, high productivity, low inequality, low carbon future for the city that we really want. And I think it's essential that this board's work dovetails with the emerging city goals work. If that is going to be the north star for this city's sort of future direction, then strategies such as this have to fit underneath that and align very, very strongly. So again, just seeking reassurance that that's sort of there in the picture of the work for this committee, of this committee and board.
If our Chair of the board that we put together, Angela Fowkes, were here, she would have said exactly what you just said about vision, connection to the city goals and ambition for Sheffield. So absolutely, that is missing in this paper, it's kind of a bit of a bottom-up paper in terms of these are the priorities that people are working on. What has been missing for a while and we need to spend time on is that top-down vision and that piece is really important. So connecting it to the city goals work is dead right. So yes, we absolutely want to get in that space and keep challenging us to make sure we do it. I think that's really good, good kind of role for the board to make sure we're getting into that kind of future vision, ambitions, ambitious space. In terms of representation, in bringing the kind of partners together to start to collaborate on this, it's a conversation the board's had in itself. When you're bringing together key organisations that need to be around the room, often diversity is an issue because senior people in these organisations aren't often that diverse, which is part of the problem raised in the Rec Commission. So we've had two conversations about this as kind of the partners coming together and we want to find a different mechanism to make sure that board is diverse. So that might be some community reps on there or some kind of staff as well. So we're looking at other mechanisms to make sure that the board is more diverse and representative. We're not there yet, but it's definitely part of the terms of reference in terms of how we're going to work going forward, so we'll be holding ourselves to account on that.
Thank you Diana. councillor Turpin and then we'll go to councillor Perrek and unless anybody else indicates, we'll wrap up then, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so it's welcome that it's coming and like, as mentioned by colleagues earlier, you know, where has it been all this time? And I like many things in the council, you know, things have just been left to just go as they please, so it is really welcome that it's being tackled. So a couple of questions then. The group has some representation from Sheffield City Council, can you tell me who that is?
That's me.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, that's great. I was thinking about elected members on the board as well and, you know, and really in the, in the new Sheffield City Council, you know, no board should go without cross-party representation.
I'll take your steer on this committee. My view was that this advisory board would be partners and we would feed back into this committee that had cross-party kind of memberships rather than have members on the partnership board itself. So it's going to be officer-led in the main. If this committee feel like that's not the appropriate terms of reference and membership for the group, happy to take a steer on that. But my thinking was that this committee could give me that political oversight if we feed into that and the partners act as an advisory board to it.
Interesting to see what colleagues think. I mean, it's better to be at the table while the conversation's happening than try to have an influence after the work's been done, I think. Okay, so I mean, I would be interested in colleagues' opinions on that, but... Okay, so I mean, I would be interested in colleagues' opinions on that. So moving on then. How do you see the limitations of the adult education budget playing into this?
I think I'll refer back to kind of the previous question around being funding led. So when we talk about the adult education budget, we're talking about a funding stream rather than talking about the outcomes that we actually want to have, kind of succeed with as our city. And I think in terms of the adult education budget, there are always with these different funding streams limitations in terms of what you can spend it on. But we need to be kind of more strategy led in terms of the delivery around some of these things, and so test if what we are doing through the adult education budget, how that builds into the delivery of the rest of the strategy, what the connections are with the other funding streams. And so rather than viewing it on its own as the adult education budget, look at it across the piece when we've mapped kind of the funding and we've got the core strategy. So we're testing how far we can push these funding streams. And where they are providing a real limitation to us, utilise kind of the mayor and our relationship through the MCA to do things differently. So some of that is now devolved, so we have more control over how and what we should be doing. I think without that strong strategy, our voice isn't strong enough in terms of saying this is what we want to deliver, these are the asks that we need, this is the things that we need to change. So I think by having that strong strategic steer in place, being outcome led and the partners together, our voice will be much stronger in terms of trying to fix some of the limitations around all of the funding streams really, not just AV.
Cool, thank you. And then just a couple of things on some details that I thought would be good to add in there. Is on part two, which is, which is how does this decision contribute, and goes on to talk about including the most vulnerable, tackling inequalities, healthy lives and wellbeing. Sheffield has the widest, the worst gender pay gap of the core cities, and I think that it's, that should be a focus of the strategy. You know, again, it's one of those things, it's been allowed to happen, doesn't have to be that way, it's not that way in other places, so you know. And the other detail I would just like to mention, which is, appears in two parts, 1.49 and 4.44 regarding supporting an inclusive workplace. It's quite a high profile trial of four day working week, and with a Sheffield business involved in it, and that did really well. Yvonne and I went to visit them, and I think if I may speak on your behalf of them, we were quite impressed with how it worked, yeah. And so just a small detail, but where there's a short list of interventions, you know, modelling of the business that a four day working week would be one of those options that we could promote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chair, just to say, if the committee want to informally input into the terms of reference and deal with the membership point and come back for a decision on that, I'm happy to do that if today's not the time to do it.
Okay, we'll include that in the summing up at the end. I currently have councillor Parek, councillor Crossland, and then councillor Dunn wants to come back in quickly, and then we'll definitely wrap it up and go to the recommendations and decisions, if that's okay with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Diana for your team's work on this. I know we're in part giving us, being asked to give a policy steer on priority areas, so I'm just going to do that briefly to the committee as much as to the off of the team. I think as it is budget day, and we know, you know, what's been announced by the government at the moment falls far short of the ambitions we have for the city, I think there's a need for us to be explicit about, you know, this should be about as much about the industries we want to grow and the skills we need to get there as it is identifying a mismatch between the skills available and what employers want to see. This work needs to reflect the political priorities of the town hall. I think we should aim to devolve matters of industrial strategy ourselves, partly to prefigure, you know, a hopeful change in priority from Whitehall and the ongoing devolution of power to Whitehall. We've seen this week more funding being given to Great Manchester and the West Midlands, Merle Combe authorities. Because if it's reflecting the priorities of the town hall, as much as this should be a post-carbon and a post-Brexit employment and skills strategy, post-COVID and post-Brexit skills strategy, it needs to be a post-carbon strategy too. I think we can look to promote green industries and work to embed the Just Transition priorities for council voted in February. I think when we look at reskilling, for example, as well as reskilling workers to upskill workers, we should be making direct interventions to transition workers from polluting industries into clean new jobs as well. I think there's an opportunity for us to intervene to shape our city. You know, I see a clear link between this and our community wealth building work. Can we bring then skills funding for employers that have clearly prioritised net zero? As councillor Turpin says, have plans for tackling the gender and racial pay gaps, you know, employers that recognise and work with trade unions, and employers that exemplify the commitment to equity that we've committed to through the Race Quality Commission. I think there's a need to champion good employers and set standards within the town hall for all employers across the city. So I agree with, you know, I agree with a lot of what the others have said. I think there's a good starting point in the emerging priority areas here, but I'd really welcome this committee taking a more direct approach to economic policy ourselves. As much as we need to work in partnership with partners across the city, there's a real need for ongoing meetings from committee members, maybe a subcommittee, to set out where we want to be and the city we want to grow.
Absolutely welcome a subcommittee, if that's something members are interested in, I think that's a great idea. And I think there is something here in terms of Sheffield City Council being best practice in these areas that we're talking about and kind of setting the standard, and also really looking at social value in the contracts and the purchasing power that we have. So I think there is an absolute role for a subcommittee to look at how Sheffield is kind of performing as a council against some of these things. I think that would be a really welcome addition.
Thank you. I'm just sitting here wondering whether that might address some of councillor Turpin's things, but we'll come to that at the end. I've got councillor Crossland, then Jane quickly at the end, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to kind of give my opinion on what councillor Turpin said about the setup of the group, really. Because I think most of this report can just be nodded through, of course we need a skills strategy. On the board itself, I think that we do need to trust experts. And as a political member, I would kind of like an un-politicised opinion of what big stakeholders in Sheffield have to say about how we can improve skills in our city. So I think there's probably a middle ground here about maybe having members of sort of ex officio, sort of viewers of the board rather than actual... We shouldn't be leading the board in my opinion as political members, because we, for good or bad, we work on four year or maybe even one year cycles, whereas businesses work on five or 10 year cycles, and we need that long term vision for our city. So we need some sort of input and to see how it's progressing, but I'm not entirely sure we should be leading it as political members. We should then hear what they have to say and figure out how to implement that as a council. So I take on what Paul was saying, I'm sure there's probably some sort of middle ground we can come up with. Don't ask us my opinion, yeah.
I think there are a number of ways to do it, I think a subcommittee idea is a really strong one. I also think that we're probably going to meet monthly, so it could be that every three months we have kind of members join us for a kind of a particular session, or we invite you for workshops, there's ways of intervening. In honesty, sometimes having elected members there does change the nature of these boards and the conversation. And I agree, a space where kind of experts can come together and give an opinion. However, they are not a decision-making board, I think we have to be absolutely clear in that. As we, if we make that decision not to put kind of members on there, that decisions need to come back to this board for oversight. Thanks.
Thank you guys, I think the discussion is getting towards kind of an area of green, councillor Dunn.
Thank you. Yeah, well councillor Turpin opened the door for me on this about the gender pay gap. Very pleased that cross-party we proposed and got through the menopause and period equality motion, and the period equality charter was launched last week, the first in the country to actually tackle this. But it's not just about that, it's about menopause rights and working terms and conditions. And as we know, 51% of our population are women, and one in 10 women leaves the workforce, and they're leaving the workforce at 40, yet they have got to work now till 67. It could be even further. That means that you can have most of your career as not been able to fulfil. So I would really like us to work with the group, and we launched it on Tuesday, and it was completely, loads of organisations there, and this is an opportunity for us to really empower. Because as big a strategy is, unless it's making a difference to people's pay packets, to people's lives, it's just seen as really high in the sky. So I'd really like to see that linked in. I would really like to see the day that no funding went to anybody unless they've got these policies in place. Because what have they got to be worried about, you know, but I really would like to see that real push in that and working with our equalities team who are leading on that. So if we could have that in terms of reference somehow, but thank you Paul for that.
Thanks Jane, and I saw that group launch this week, and as a woman getting into her 40s, I appreciate. And just to say, I think the gender pay gap, it's complex underneath that, it's not just about what you're being paid, it's what kind of jobs you're in, what types of jobs you're in. And so it's unpicking some of those issues around why people are leaving the labour market, childcare will come into this. So, you know, it looks like it might just be about pay, but it's about a whole other level of thing. So we need to unpick that and understand it to make sure we're pulling the right levers, so thanks.
Thank you Diana, and thank you, oh you're sneaking at the end Ben.
Chair, just like to suggest some proposals moving forward, if you wouldn't mind. Based upon, I think, some of the discussions that we've had today, based upon some of the clarifications from officers and some of the, I guess, concerns and ways forward that have been suggested. So the paper sets out, doesn't it, it sets out an employment and skills board, and it seeks it seeks to lead on the development of Sheffield employment and skills strategy. We know that it includes many partners, and we want that to continue because it's so important that we do that and we have that space, including people like the Sheffield College, the Chamber of Commerce, the ICB and both universities. I guess I take the view, and I know many members in the room do today, that this is a really positive move. And actually, we know that it's a shadow board that has already been set up, and that experts and stakeholders really should advise politicians, and I think that was a point that councillor Crossland made earlier. And we should take that advice and use that in our policy decisions. But like we've heard today and we've had clarified from officers, the Economic Development and Skills Committee should be the committee that sets that policy. And that certainly is the intention of the discussion that we've had today and what we've heard from officers. So the proposals that I'm going to suggest actually clarify that in the document. I think we've also had some concerns about members perhaps not being sufficiently represented on the board, and I think that needs some further work and discussions. And there was a suggestion of a subcommittee. My understanding is that constitutionally, and we'll have it, perhaps have a clarification, this board can't necessarily automatically set up, I don't think it's a subcommittee. But I do understand that we can set up a task and finish group, and we can only run one of those at the same time. So that would seem to be a good opportunity for us to be able to discuss some of those wider concerns that we might have about terms of reference, but also potentially about membership. So Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just going to propose a set of kind of formal recommendations, formal amendments to the report, and I know members will have seen sight of these already. So the first one will be to amend the committee recommendation to read approves the creation of an employment and skills advisory board. Now, it's quite clear that that's our intention here, that it should be an advisory board, I think we should call it an advisory board. That we should add in whilst we'll hopefully be having a wider discussion about the terms and reference. It does mention the terms and reference in the document, but under 2.25, we should add an additional point, which should be to advise the council's Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee on matters relating to employment and skills. So just to codify and make it absolutely clear that, you know, this is about partnership working, this is about making sure that this body, which is very important, is about advising. And the final one is really to deal with the point, I think, that was eloquently made by councillor Turpin about his concerns about representation, and also about our wider concerns about political, the political oversight and political decision-making with regards to kind of coming up with the final employment and skills strategy. So that will be to add an additional recommendation, which will be to create a task and finish group of this committee to receive recommendations of the advisory board and to lead on the development of the Sheffield Employment and Skills Strategy, which I think will be in line with councillor Crossland's point where, that he made with regards to us taking on board the advice of experts, those people in industry, and ensuring that that feeds in appropriately to the ultimate policy direction that we opt to go for. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Miskell. Before we put that to a vote, could I ask that you, I mean, Abby's... She's doing a cracking job, you wouldn't believe how neat this handwriting is, I'm just stunned by it. If you could finger an email with that, that'd be great. Anybody want to comment on that councillor Turpin?
Thank you. Thanks Ben for putting this together, and I appreciate the nod as well. So generally, I am supportive of this, and I think that we will be supporting it. I just would like to really get some clarification on how the two boards would then dovetail and be careful that they're not working at odds, you know. And this is why I think it's important to be in the conversation while it's happening rather than afterwards, you know. You know, I'm not expecting any malice or any, you know, far right gubbins or far outs. You know, I'm not expecting it to be weird and terrible, but you know, let's just have a protocol to make sure that it isn't and that it's as good as it can be. So, you know, I would partially disagree with Curtis. You know, I do have respect for experts, but also, you know, we are experts, you know, all of us here have our own visions for a better society. And ultimately, that's what should be shaping the strategy, you know, not what's best for the educators, what's best for the people we represent. And so, you know, it is important that we're involved and that we steer that strategy. You know, a couple of examples, you know, where are the electric vehicle mechanics courses? Why are people training to be gas engineers having to travel to Doncaster every day? You know, this is what happens when you leave that strategy to the education organisations. So it is important that we steer it, and it's important that it's steered in a way that's not a back and forth, but is truly collaborative. So can someone tell me how that's going to happen or how that's going to happen within this amended version?
I'll give it a go, and perhaps councillor Miskell will tell me whether I'm right or wrong. But the steer you just requested would be provided by the task and finish group that councillor Miskell proposed. That's my understanding, but Ben?
Yes Chair, I think the intention would be that the task and finish group would be set up in order to be able to deal with those issues that we would look at specifically at the terms of reference of the advisory board that has been set up. But also it would be a space to meet and receive regular updates and reports and recommendations from the advisory board. I do take on board the concerns that... board. I do take on board the concerns that councillor Turpin raises. I think that it would be a good opportunity to be able to discuss those at the task and finish group that we hopefully will set up if this recommendation is accepted.
Okay, so let's wrap things up. First of all, can I thank everybody for presenting? I'm advised that we can set up a task and finish group?
Yeah, Chair, yeah, absolutely. You can set up a task and finish group. And I think obviously we'll need to engage to get the specific terms. You might want to use this opportunity to specify within the amended recommendation who will be appointed from the membership of the committee to that task and finish group. And it perhaps might suggest a representative of the political groups on the committee. One, obvious for discussion. But it's useful to specify at this stage when you're taking the recommendation.
I'm working under the assumption, colleagues, that there'll be at least one person from each of the political groups on that task and finish group. Whether it's more than one, I don't know. But is that something we can take forward as a recommendation? And I know we're just coming up into PEP, but we can have discussions on how to set up task and finish groups within PEP, can we?
Yes. So obviously, we'd want to avoid as much debate after today. So we're approving, I think we can formulate that the amendment to the recommendation is on this limb, to approve the creation of a task and finish group to oversee the council's activity in relation to the board, made up of members of the committee, one representing each of the political groups on the committee? At least one. Okay. So that may be a very full task and finish group.
I think we're going to have to suck it and see, aren't we?
Chair, I would agree with councillor Turpin that the wording should read at least one. It just gives us the flexibility. And the way that this committee operates is we seek to be inclusive, and I think that's really important.
Thank you. I'm detecting that we're all in violent agreement on that as an amendment. But if anybody dissents, could they indicate? In that case, we'll take that amendment as approved. And can we then, subject to that amendment, approve the remaining recommendations as in the report? If anybody disagrees, then let's carry. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for presenting. Okay, so thank you very much for that. Now, we have an item on business startups, which I know we've requested and discussed a bit in the past. So looking forward to this one. I think, Yvonne, you're leading on this. Is that correct? Or does it die again?
Thankfully, Yvonne is going to lead on this. I just wanted to kind of just give a bit of an introduction that this is a really important area of policy of this committee to really kind of get hold of. And so we wanted to mark before kind of this committee morphs kind of into post election, how important this is by bringing some kind of partners in and having a real evidence-based session, really, where we talk to you about some of the data around startups, and the programmes that exist, what the ecosystem's like, the partners in the room. I thought that would be really good to do that in public with committee to kind of set the tone for next year in terms of this being a really important policy area that EDS get their teeth stuck into with partners and in collaboration. So I'll hand over to Yvonne.
Thank you.
This is about a thirty minute presentation-ish, and each of the kind of people who are joining us today are going to introduce themselves and speak. And then we'll have time for questions at the end. Thanks.
So just double check. Hold our questions till the end. If that's okay with everybody?
Thank you. Just to say, I don't have the clicker as well, so I'll just nod. Okay, thank you. So as Di said, what we're going to talk about today is what the data tells us about startups in Sheffield, the changes that we as stakeholders have seen in the ecosystem and the progress that we've seen over the last couple of years. And finally, the gaps that still exist in Sheffield startups and the things that we need to concentrate on going forward. As Di said, there are a number of reps and stakeholders in the room today. So they will introduce themselves as they come in, but they're just everybody's logos. And you can see there's quite a lot of organisations represented at committee today, all involved in startup. Thank you. Okay, so why are startups so important? Well, they provide us, it's essential for economic growth. They're a great source of new jobs. They instigate new innovation products and services. And they create wealth, both, you know, in the economy and also for the individual startups themselves. They provide a good life for those individuals. They're the lifeblood of an active and innovative economy, and also an inward investment tool. So when we talk about startups, we're not just talking about indigenous startups in Sheffield. We're talking about the ability to bring startups in from other places outside of Sheffield, and start up and scale here as well. So it's a really important inward investment tool as well. I'm just going to hand over to Alexis from the chamber, who can explain why startups are so important for the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Good morning, councillors. It's always nice to see you all. Why is startup so important to Sheffield Chamber? I'll start with a rather bold vision. In the chamber, we want Sheffield to be the best place in the UK to start a business. There's nothing stopping our city being that place. And we think it's incredibly important as a Chamber of Commerce to play a supporting role in making that happen. In the darkest moments of the pandemic, the Business Response Group was convened, which put together a business recovery plan that many of you, if not all of us, were aware of. And we identified that if there was ever to be a silver lining to the pandemic, it was galvanising to make a change in our economy. And so we set out in that business recovery plan, the very bold charge to improve the startup rate in our city, because it is relatively low compared to others. That really important point was underpinned by a rather pithy set of phrases that somebody else formulated, which I will steal this morning. If healthcare workers were the heroes of the pandemic, entrepreneurs are the heroes of the recovery. And that's why it's so gratifying to be here this morning, talking alongside so many partners, as we do more and more to create the conditions to help startups in our city. There's a final few phrases from me before handing over to others. In Sheffield Chamber's view, if we want a fairer economy, if we want more innovation, to think about how we respond meaningfully to the climate crisis, if we want to create more jobs in our city, in many ways, the answer to those challenges begins and ends with creating the conditions to start new businesses in our city. And as Yvonne has said, it's not just about creating the opportunities for local people to start new businesses, but also creating the conditions for others to come to Sheffield to start businesses and fulfil their dreams as well. So that's why it's important to Sheffield Chamber, and why I'm very pleased to be here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. So I won't stop on this slide for too long, but you can see in the lighter blue, Sheffield appears against other core cities in terms of both startup rates and business death rates. So you can see on both of those, we are six out of eight. If you can just move on to the next slide. Thank you. So those stats, really, we've seen move only very recently. As long as I've been involved in business support, I think Sheffield has been at the lowest ranking order of the core cities for startup rates, and has just this year changed to position six. We've always done slightly better on the number of business death rates, but actually, a really thriving economy has more churn and more business deaths, basically, than we currently appear on the previous slide. But just to kind of couch that, we are seeing improvements in the ecosystem and the sentiment about startups in the city of Sheffield. And just to explain some of those things, Sheffield was voted the best city to start a business in twenty twenty-two by startups, quoting green space, low cost of living, large working population and good transport links. And similarly, we've also seen progress in early-stage venture capital. So starting from a very low base, but definitely moving in the right direction, Sheffield was the second highest growth rate across all the cities, the core cities, very recently. And that was a hundred and forty-nine percent growth rate over two years. Again, it started from a low base, but it does kind of indicate that things are now happening in the ecosystem. We talk about ecosystem all the time, and this is just really to just describe what an ecosystem is. I think this is a really good descriptor. So Harvard Business Review use this description of the ecosystem. So highlighting the core elements outside of the startup community, sorry, with the startup community at the core. And a good ecosystem needs elements of all of those things. So in Sheffield, we've seen progress towards a policy driver for startups in Sheffield City Council. That's why we're here this morning. It was explicit, as Alexis said, in the business recovery plan. And also, we've seen, working with MCA partners, a real priority driver around startups too. So, you know, those things are good. The culture around startups is getting better, but it still feels like there's lots still to do to create real ambition in our indigenous startups and across our communities as well, not just in the centre of Sheffield. We have good access to talent from the college and both universities in Sheffield. Finance is improving, and we will hear about that from a number of the presenters this morning. But there are still gaps in that system when we compare ourselves to other northern cities, for example, like Manchester and Leeds. Market access massively important for any startup. You need sales for any startup business. And strategically, we are seeing more focus around market access. So for example, the AMID work that's going on at the moment, it's a good example of exploring how we can create innovative startups using our specialist sector knowledge in the city as well. And finally, business support. A lot of us presenting this morning are involved in delivering business support. There's been real progress in this area, but still gaps. So you'll hear Tom talk about the Team SY Acceleration Programme funded until June, but that funding stops in June. So, you know, it's important that we look at some of those gaps that are on the horizon and where we've got to so far in business support too. I'm going to hand over to Dash, who can explain why she moved to Sheffield, the founder of a startup who actually moved to Sheffield and growing a business here. Thank you, Dash. Yes, just press the button. Thank you. Has it gone red?
This is exciting. Yeah. So, hi, I'm Dash Tabor. I'm a co-founder and CEO of Tuber. Tuber is building the next generation of machine learning and AI. We've taken a physics-based approach to building machine learning and AI instead of statistical. And why that's important is it feeds our mission. Our mission is to make machine learning, AI accessible to SMEs. But we're doing that by requiring less data, taking all the data science elements into our machine learning as a service. So you don't need to hire those skills so that you can move a lot faster. We can actually have a company up and running in less than two weeks. So you can really start seeing results really quickly. And, you know, we just don't want companies to be left behind. Technology's moving forward. The technology needs to be able to meet every company, and that's our goal, and that's our mission. You can probably tell from the accent, I didn't grow up here. But I've been in the UK thirteen years. I did my masters in London, and I actually started the company in London. I realised really quickly that there's a lot of noise in London. Even if we're the only company doing this in this space, it's really hard to get into certain conversations, certain places, just because everybody's trying to have those same conversations. So I knew that I wanted to move out of London and be able to see what I could do in the regions. I was spending a lot of time in South Yorkshire during the pandemic, and that's kind of how I got tapped into the Sheffield ecosystem. I think the ecosystem is definitely one of the main reasons why I thought, okay, this is where I need to be. In that first year or two of my business, I would spend way too much time trying to find one person, to find another person, to find another person who could answer a simple question for me. And once I was able to tap in, actually, I started at STP, but once we found STP and kind of started getting sucked into the ecosystem, I now can drop an email to a couple of different people and have an answer or resources at my fingertips, probably within an hour. It's absolutely amazing. I think what's really important to, and I guess last night I was kind of trying to pull some stats together for this, I think, from what I can even grasp, the ecosystem's probably saving more than ten thousand pounds on just mentoring and so forth, and other resources that have been made available through this funding that's there, which is an enormous amount of money to our business. That's, you know, runway, a month's runway, more than a month's runway in some cases. So I think what's really important to us are kind of two things. One, that we meet our customers' needs, and that, you know, we build a product that they actually use. And the other's money. And money is important. It's how much I can keep in my bank account in order to spend on what I need to spend. So that ecosystem helps do that. And then I think the other part of that is access to funding. Since the year that I've been here, the ecosystem It might just not like my American accent. So, but yeah, so the two things are the customers, you know, having access to the customers, building something that customers want and need, but then also money. How can I extend my runway? And then how can I get that funding in in order to fuel our mission and get where we need to go? Now, I have seen an increase of funding in that space. I think that's an area we can improve on. And I also think understanding and creating an environment that's not as risk averse will attract even more startups in that space. And keep me here, too. I'm trying to make sure I've said, I think I've said pretty much, yeah, just a few things that I think that ecosystem has done for me, just to kind of point that out. You know, I work a lot with Morgan and Team SY. As I said, I think like at least two of the opportunities that we think are likely to close this month, actually, were intros from Morgan, which I think is really a testament to being able to get access to those companies and exactly what this service is doing. And then the amount of money that's saving, the mentorship. I dropped an email to someone at Team SY a month ago and said, I need help with skills for selling. And within a couple of days, there was a training available for selling. I mean, this is just absolutely amazing in a lot of different ways. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dash. That's awesome. Thank you. So we'll go on to other presentations from stakeholders involved in the ecosystem. And the first one is the Launchpad Programme. So we've mentioned this before at committee. At the last committee meeting, we approved UK SPF funding for the next two years of Launchpad. It provides critical support to startup businesses in Sheffield. It's actually part of a wider South Yorkshire programme. Christina, who's sat at the back here, is one of our specialist business advisers working in the programme. And what we do is really help businesses to test their viability through advisor support and workshops. I've mentioned before that we're really looking at reshaping this business model, which has been going for quite some time, and looking at how we can better work with our local communities, as well as being centrally available. A key thing for us right now, which we lost during Covid, was the ability to provide face-to-face workshops. So actually, looking for a home both in the city centre and using venues in local So actually looking for a home both in the city centre and using venues in local communities is really important for us at the moment. And generally working with stakeholders like those included in the presentation today, avoiding duplication and ensuring that we're all kind of jointly working together. I'm going to hand over, if it's okay, to Ruth McDonald. So Ruth has been working with our Launchpad Programme for quite a while now and can provide some information about working with more diverse communities too. Thanks, Ruth.
Hello, everybody. So, yeah, I'm Ruth McDonald, I'm a social worker as well as a race quality commissioner. I've had the opportunity to access the Event Central space. Whilst working in that space, I've managed to bring in a number of community projects, diverse community projects who would not usually have the opportunity to have access to the Event Central. I'm not quite sure whether you know where the Event Central is, it's on Fargate, across from Marks and Spencer's. This has also given me the opportunity to work in conjunction with the Launchpad, helping the businesses who tend to do businesses in their back bedroom, on social media. I've actually been able to link them with business Sheffield, Christina, who's actually helped a number of the projects move from, move to the next level. Again, when you actually look at a lot of the projects that tend to work in the back bedrooms, a lot of the projects don't actually know and understand how Sheffield businesses, the Launchpad, actually work. So it's been really, really beneficial to actually have that access to these services in regards to building the business and getting out there. And one of the things what we're currently doing, I mean, this is with joint funding as well, from Sheffield University, we've actually been able to kind of use the empty space and bring the projects into the Event Central to where a number of the projects were able to set up stalls. Again, working alongside with Christina, this has actually helped them to build on their business and actually look at what a real business actually looks like. So it's been really beneficial. We've currently got the art space taking place in the Event Central. So I'd like you to, you know, when you're walking down Fargate, just pop in and see, you know, some of the good work that's actually, you know, happening in there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cheers, thank you. So another part of business Sheffield support is tech scale-up advisers. So Dash mentioned earlier, working with Morgan. Morgan is one of our tech scale-up advisers and sat at the back here. We started tech scale-up adviser support quite a number of years ago now because we recognised that there was a huge gap in the city around tech support, especially, you know, going to Manchester and Leeds to networking and investments, investment events. It felt like businesses were going outside of Sheffield to look for investment, so that's where the idea for tech scale-up advisers came from. They are founders of their own successful tech startups themselves, and they mentor indigenous tech startups and scale-ups. And I think Dash kind of highlighted a number of the things that the tech advisers do with our indigenous businesses, but connect and navigate the local ecosystem, they help founders have confidence in themselves, they contribute to the strategic direction of the business, and introduce startups and scale-ups to potential customers, investors and accelerators. They also help develop investable cash flow forecasts and pitch decks as well. But I just want to make the point that it's not all about investment for startups. So the stats at the other side of the slide show that there are 65 businesses that the tech advisers are working with since April, so nearly a year. And it's more or less a 50-50 split of businesses looking for investment in that caseload, from kind of early-stage seed investment all the way through to Series A. So it's important investment, but, you know, businesses can scale and grow sometimes without that investment piece. Thank you. And the next slide, if that's okay? And I'm going to hand over to Tom Wolfenden, who can talk to us about the SHAR network and Team SY. Thank you.
Thanks, morning, everyone. I hope this microphone behaves. So my name's Tom Wolfenden, Chief Executive of Sheffield Technology Parks. So the Tech Parks is a non-profit, limited by guarantee organisation set up by the council and the chamber and the universities and polytechnic back in the late 80s, focused around economic development. And we've been working hard over the past few years as both a city-wide and then region-wide network of incubators and accelerators. So it started off with, I think, five or six core kind of business support organisations, and that grew through the Team SY Programme, which I'll talk about a bit more. The purpose really is to ensure that there's a kind of solid, you know, aside from policy, there is a solid ecosystem kind of management and making sure there's coherence around what the support programmes are. If there's any overlap, identify it and try to avoid duplication. But we also have a mantra of no wrong door. So as Dash mentioned, you know, you can go to any one of our members, and if we don't think, for example, you're suitable for the Technology Parks, we will assign, post you out to other support providers in the region. And that's started to work really well, and we're starting to attract investors into there. We've got policymakers that attend meetings, people from the council and tech scale advisers. So there's a real good mix and it's really well-attended. We hold those meetings bimonthly. Importantly includes both universities as well because they're a key part of any kind of thriving economic ecosystem. And I think there's some stats, I'm just looking over your head, Paul, sorry. Twenty-six partner organisations now. The core delivery team has grown from three co-founders, myself, Laura Bennett and Darren Chowings, that's grown to five as a delivery team. And I think there's something that we'd like to flag as a SIA network is that we're also looking as a network to do sub-projects. So we've piloted an information corpus for business advisers, which has lots of live information about opportunities to make sure all the kind of information shared is kind of relevant and accessible to people. And we've also identified a broad gap across all of our programmes, is sole founders struggle to find a co-founder to build their business with. So we've got a South Yorkshire co-founder platform that we developed and paid for and launched. And that's just two good examples of what we're able to do as a network. I think there's a big role for the SIA network in the absence of what we currently have, which is called Team SY, and I'll talk about that. Is there a slide on that, Yvonne, next? Yeah, yeah. Thanks. So Team SY, I'm assuming people know, but I'll give you the information, so sorry if you already know this. But Team SY was a market-making project that was first, I think first pitched in kind of 2018, 2019, and it addressed the need then of a real kind of big injection, a top-down injection of ERDF funding to really pump-prime this economic entrepreneurial ecosystem as well. Knowing and recognising that Leeds and Manchester and Liverpool and Newcastle are kind of those few years and that bit more mature ecosystems, it's had a huge impact. And part of the reason we sat around today talking as a group of people is because of this huge top-down intervention. Now, as with all ERDF projects, there's a risk of all of this good stuff, you know, it's a bit like the last day of the holiday. It seems to just be coming to fruition as the funding's coming to an end, and we really need to maintain that. So I think there's a key role for the SIA members as individual organisations to make sure there's kind of core functions of what the Team SY Programme has been able to do. But there's also the recognition that, you know, these numbers would have been a lot lower without this intervention. So there's 215 startups, 50 new company starts and 41 new products created by those companies as well. And that's been across 16 delivery partners. It's been really useful as a project to get people into the region and people hearing about the region as well. So Sheffield now is becoming part of what people refer to as the Northern Triangle between Leeds, Manchester and Sheffield. And he'll talk a bit about the Northern Gritstone that's enabling that as well. There's something around the pace at which things are happening at the moment is really important as well. And I think there are clearly two things, that 50-50 split you referred to. There's companies that do take, you know, investment and they grow and they scale, as you hear about. But there's also the organic startups, and as Alexis mentioned, these might not be kind of, you know, 150 or 500-person organisations, these might be kind of six to eight to 10, and we accommodate lots of those in the Tech Parks. I think there's a recognition that if that's the kind of scale that we do get our local organic businesses to, that's fine, we just need a lot more to create the employment jobs and, you know, the opportunities that you referred to in the previous session. So I think that's probably enough from me, but I hope that gives you a kind of overview of where we're at.
Massively helpful, Tom. Thank you very much for that context too. I'm going to pass over now to Andy Hogbin from the University of Sheffield to talk about the Northern Gritstone Fund.
Who's that? Sorry. So, morning, everyone. Yes, I'm Andy Hogbin, I'm the Head of Intellectual Property at the University of Sheffield. And I'm going to talk to you about specifically spin-out companies. So spin-out companies are businesses that emerge from the university that utilise intellectual property that comes from our research. So it's mainly around our academic researchers and the work they do. It's nothing to do with our sort of undergraduate students and that cohort that come through, there's different support for that. But since 2017, as the slide says, we've really reshaped how we support spin-out companies to emerge from the University of Sheffield. This is primarily about establishing a sort of new internal support system that helps the founders, help the innovators on their journey, going from a scientific concept through to a business that can raise money or sell a product. That internal support system involves training, it involves mentorship, it involves a little bit of market access and market discovery, going out and talking to customers. But then importantly, it's also involved funding. The university now commits about one and a half million pounds a year cash to projects to seed new businesses and new technologies that emerge, which makes it quite a large pre-seed investor from that point. And this has led to a rapid growth. So since 2019, we've established 20 new spin-out companies from a range of sectors, and I hope there's a few badges on the screen that you recognise, but, you know, this aligns with the type of research that a university like University of Oxford does. So obviously things like life sciences with Rinri Therapeutics being a stem cell therapy company. Obviously, we all know about the Advanced Manufacturing Research Centre, and we have two spin-outs there that have emerged quite recently and are doing rather well. And then what people out there refer to as the sort of deep tech businesses and engineering businesses. So we have Opturan working on fourth-generation artificial intelligence, Flux developing infrared sensors for driverless vehicles, all the sort of technologies that you sort of read about in the press. Really where this has taken us to now is when asked us in the conversation about retention, it's been great over the last five years seeding lots of companies and creating lots of companies. Now, my mission and the mission of my colleagues is to talk about how do we retain them in Sheffield? We don't want to be known as the place where it's great to start a company, but once you've employed four people into it and you need to scale, that you then need to leave. We don't think that's particularly helpful for our local economy. The hard work that we put in here and the success that we're starting to see, though, has allowed us to work with our partners over in Manchester and Leeds, the two universities over there, to build Northern Gritstone, which I think there's another slide on. So just to give you the details on that, yes, working between Universities of Sheffield, Manchester and Leeds. We came together around 2018, 2019, started collaborating together on how to better support spin-outs and share best practice between us, but with a clear aim that we wanted to establish a new investment vehicle. So in 2020, we founded a new company called Northern Gritstone. That company is now independent of us, but we have signed up a 15-year partnership with them. And Gritstone has to date raised £215 million, and they closed that in May 2022. And that funding is available now for intellectual property-rich businesses in our region. We did set it up for the purpose of supporting our spin-out companies, but it also absolutely has the remit to invest in intellectual property-rich companies that haven't emerged from either of the three universities. And we can see that from their first investments, that three South Yorkshire-based investments to date, they have done some over in Leeds, we'll give them those, but there's three South Yorkshire investments to date. Two of our spin-outs, Opturan and Flux, who appeared on the previous slide, but actually one of their largest investments so far has been into isotope technologies, who are not a spin-out of the university, they're a partner of ours, they work with the AMRC, but they are a good, solid local business that is scaling. And when we look at the money that's then brought to the region, if you add up the total investment rounds in these three companies, this isn't all Gritstone's money, it's all other investors in too, but we've seen £44 million flowing into our companies in our region. And a lot of that goes on jobs, it goes on scaling these businesses.
Brilliant, thank you very much, Andy. So just lastly, the slide on the ecosystem anyway, a welcome introduction really, the South Yorkshire Tech Welcome Grant. So this really is for those businesses like Dash moving into Sheffield and South Yorkshire, provides them with a grant for the first year towards their rent, and the grant amount is dependent on the number of jobs that the business is bringing with them or employing when they get here as well. So it is only a pilot scheme at the moment, but definitely something that is of huge interest to startups and a promotional tool as well for startups outside of the city in South Yorkshire to come and kind of locate and grow here. So I just wanted to get that offering as well. The final slide really is around the gaps and opportunities, and I think we've heard a lot from stakeholders and partners this morning about some of those gaps. The things that have stuck out for me as people have been talking is acceleration, you know, that's got to be a priority, and that's why we've seen a big increase in the ecosystem over the last couple of years. It feels like it's a priority going forward. Investment, again, you know, that's been covered a number of times. This issue around sole founders struggling to find co-founders, you know, so often people that come up with business ideas, they're not sellers themselves, they need a co-founder that can work with them and do that selling and get the business, as it were. And I also want to say that as we've been preparing this presentation as well, it's obvious to us that we're not very good at that collective narrative and that promotion about what's happening really in the ecosystem and getting that message out, both kind of, you know, locally and nationally as well. That seems to be a focus that we need to look at. I'm going to finish off the presentation by asking Joseph Quinn and then Alexis to come in. So Joseph is from the MCA, and hopefully he will be able to agree that some of the region funds and the priorities that Simca have might align with some of these gaps. Thanks, Joseph.
Thank you, Yvonne. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for having me here today. I'd just like to say, before I start, that we've been doing a lot of work around this space for a long time, but that work's never going to stop, it's continuous, it's never going to be fixed, it's never going to be solved, it's something that's going to have to adapt as we go along. And I'd put like to put on record my thanks to Sheffield City Council, Yvonne and Ben Moly and others who've been really instrumental in helping us with this over the last few months. And I think probably we should say is we've got a really complex system across South Yorkshire, including Sheffield. And an element of that is that there's been an awful lot of programmes that have been developed over a number of years by the public sector, but they're augmented by a huge amount of other bits of stuff that's going on all over the ecosystem. Some of it's incredibly important, but it is also hard to navigate and hard to know where to drop in and when to be in the right place. So we took forward some principles over the last year, and this has really been driven by UK SPF, the reduction in funding there, and that urgency it's created for us to stop and go, are we doing the right things and are we engaging in the right way? And are we making the most of what's already happening in the region? So we took some foundational principles into those discussions around balance, efficiency, sectoral focus, growth, access to finance. And we've been having some really quite difficult conversations between ourselves about whose right to do what, where and to whom. And I think you're starting to see the output of some of that. So Yvonne has mentioned today, things around Launchpad, productivity grants, net zero, and how we're working as a group across the region to create as much efficiency within that funding that we do have. But there are gaps, and there's a number of gaps, and you've heard from businesses here today who are talking about some of that support that's really started to make a difference around acceleration, around Team SY, around access to finance. And the key, from the MCA's point of view, is that we don't want to be anywhere where we don't add additional value. So we see our role as trying to fill some of those gaps that exist, but we do that in a collaborative way. So, for example, on finance, we are talking to a number of institutional investors about work they can do in South Yorkshire. But to do that, we're engaging with the local authorities and others to say, come and help us shape those conversations. And we have a number of investors that we're working to, and they're quite keen to be in South Yorkshire actually and do more business here, but we have to play our part in making sure that they're able to come. Within that, we're also looking at how we create co-investment funds, how we use public money to offset risk for that really early-stage investment business. You've heard a lot from Andy on Northern Gritstone and other things, and they're incredibly important that we have there, but there's an element of we've got to create the pipeline as well to make that investment sticky in the region. And so we've been talking quite a bit today about acceleration, innovation, intranet entrepreneurship, and they're all things that we consider real high priorities for the region. But we... But we do have some funding challenges and we are going to have to make some difficult decisions. So, we are talking to our Thematic Board, our Business Recovery and Growth Board, about how we prioritise that activity and how we fund it, and then how we design what that activity looks like. So, a good example of this is we will be asking our Business Board this week to prioritise acceleration and that, building on that work that Team S South Yorkshire has done. But to do that, we know that it can't be the same as what we've been doing. We need to adapt. We need to learn from that programme. We need to talk to people who can help us design the right programme. Most of them are in this room right now, actually, but there are others too. And so, what we're committing to do is when we do prioritise these things, we want to come out and do co-design and work with these different groups to say, actually, what is the right thing to do and who are the right people to deliver it? So, that's probably a bit of a mind shift for the MCA. And that's something we've tried to move away from being commissioner, deliverer and owner of all of these things to say, actually, how do we work better within the system and only go into the space where we're needed to help shape and bring it forward, investment or other elements that might be missing from that ecosystem? But as I've said, it's an ongoing thing. It's never going to be finished. And I'm now, as I speak, I'm thinking, why did I ever get involved? Because it isn't going to be finished. But to let you know, there's a number of things we're taking forward. So, we're looking at acceleration. We're looking at entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship. We want to do more on co-working incubation. We want to look at some of our nascent sectors, so thinking about cultural and creative programmes, what we need to do with the tech sector, and then other things around supply chains and that work. And that work is being done as a cross-regional group of individuals who are doing that and will continue with that. And we intend in the future that we'll be steering from that group. So, as these programmes are online, as they're taking place, they don't stand still. We won't be saying, year one, this is what we're doing, and that will be exactly the same for three years. What we want to know is get that feedback here from different individuals and adapt as we go along. And that's one of the things that the changing in the funding environment is allowing us to do more of, actually. It's forcing us to be a little bit more creative about how we think about some of this stuff. And that's something that we'll be continuing to do over the next few months.
Brilliant. Thank you, Joseph. Before I hand over to Alexis to talk about the presidency pledge, I just wanted to note as well, one of the other gaps, and I haven't kind of said it, but it is on the slide and it's something that we see quite regularly now, is wet lab space. So, we get a number of inquiries into the investment team and are unable to accommodate them. So, you know, people who want space, it's not just desk space, actually, lab space. And that is definitely a gap that we're seeing and also talking to the MCA about. I think Tom would, Tom and both Andy would agree, you know, we need homes for these startups that are looking to grow and need that kind of lab space. Thank you. Alexis, I'll just pass on to you to finish the presentation, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Just before concluding the presentation, just a very short anecdote. I couldn't agree more with the point about wet labs. I think I'm probably the only person in this room who's self-funded with my wife the construction of a laboratory. And the only thing I would say is, don't do it on your own. It's challenging. In November, I'll become Sheffield Chamber's President, which intimidates me somewhat because I'm not looking forward to wearing a chain for two years. In addition, since Louisa Harrison-Walk and I got involved in running the chamber, we've moved to a position that every chamber president has a priority, something that they really care about, that they're committed to, so that at the end of their presidency, they can leave a meaningful difference, a positive imprint on the economy. The current chamber president, Karen Mosley, is focusing on skills and is doing a lot of work in that space. So, in the run-up to November, I've been thinking about what Sheffield Chamber can do in the startup ecosystem, recognising that, and candidly, we don't do that much at the moment. So, I just wanted just to share with you a few thoughts that we're having in the chamber. Yvonne talks about a presidential pledge. I'm deeply intimidated by the idea of a presidential pledge. So, what I'm about to share with you are some initial ideas that partners in the room and indeed members of this committee may want to reflect on and may want to offer feedback in the spirit of collaboration. If we're going to make Sheffield the best place in the UK to start a business, we need to make it easier and more obvious to everybody who lives in Sheffield that it's possible to start a business. And we have to make that really, really clear and very easy to engage with. And that's really the starting point of the ideas we're having in the chamber. We're also struck by the huge amount of good and hard work that is done by officers primarily and members to use funding from different sources to maintain programmes over periods of years. We could probably talk for hours about the demise of ERDF and we could probably talk quite a while about how we've had to use strategically the SPF to keep some really important things going. But in Sheffield Chamber, we're really interested about ideas that could be self-sustaining and that could become permanent features of the economic life of the city. So that, yes, when funding becomes available, we can harness it, but we're not always reliant on it because it can be energy-sapping, moving from one funding round to the next. And then last but not least, we're really interested in the idea that we make a startup programme accessible to everybody at any point in the day. And before I share the features of that idea, I just want to put on record, and it's genuine and sincere, that we're hugely supportive of Launchpad and that we're not looking to replicate or duplicate. We're just thinking a bit further into the future, maybe 18 months, two years, when we start to think what comes next. A lot of startup programmes are predicated, and rightly in many ways, on coming to workshops and coming into the city centre or going into communities. What we're interested in is the idea that you can access a business startup programme from the convenience of your sofa or dining room or kitchen, be it at seven o'clock in the morning, at 2am in the morning, or at 3pm in the afternoon after you pick the kids up. That doesn't assume an app or something particularly complex. It's just to acknowledge that there's a huge amount of technology out there that perhaps the chamber could better harness so people can access a business support programme at their convenience, whether or not they're inspired in the middle of the night or energetic in the morning. It's not a challenge. It's just a reflection. The cold, hard reality of a lot of business support ecosystems in this country is they're monolingual. And the primary means of delivery is the English language. And of course, that makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. But in the chamber, we're starting to think about how we might be able to use artificial intelligence and machine learning so that a business startup programme can work in multiple languages. Pun ultimately, and there's some ambition here, so it may not be realistic, councillors. The idea of having a business startup programme that runs for a month and then improves month on month based on the feedback of pre-existing people who have gone involved in it. So, it's every 30 days, the business, the startup programme is learning so that as people come into it, they're benefiting from the feedback from those who came before them. And then last but not least, central to this idea is really saying to people, you, there is something very special about this city. We're doing quite a lot of work behind the scenes. There are business startup programmes, business accelerator programmes. There are hundreds, there are thousands around the world, and there are many brilliant ones in this city. But the idea that the chamber's thinking about is a business startup programme, which is unashamedly Sheffield. And I'll just look down to remind myself as to what we mean by that. Because a lot of what you've heard this morning is unashamedly Sheffield. But a business startup programme where every single theory comes from one of our universities, from one of our academics. Every single case study to inspire somebody on a programme comes from a business in Sheffield. Every single resource that they may access during that business startup programme comes from an expert, an individual, an organisation that is steeped in the history of the city. And that is to test a thesis. And the thesis is relatively simple, is that there are business data programmes all over the world and they largely have seven features, and I won't repeat them because I can't remember them right now. But they all lack one feature, a pure definition of place. So, as a final comment, what we're looking to do in the coming years in Sheffield Chamber is launch a business startup programme that if you cut it in half, it would look like a stick of rock. And in that stick of rock, it would say Sheffield because every single defining feature of that business startup programme was shaped by something that comes from this city. We've just got to figure out how we can design that and roll that out before November. I'll go back to that work later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alexis. And we can move to questions from the committee now. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody that presented well. Speaking personally, it's one of the best presentations I've seen this year. It's hugely impressive. Thank you, everybody, for coming to do that. I know there were three or four of us on the committee who started a small or micro business. And I love, personally, I love that unashamedly Sheffield bit at the end, Alexis, that whole thing about, you know, cutting a stick of rock and it says Sheffield. Collective idea. I do apologise. Stand corrected. So, yeah, hugely impressive. And wouldn't it be great if we could get that message out more, that positive message about what a great place it is to start a business? And it's also fantastic to see that we're sixth. I know it's sixth, and we want to be better, but that's a heck of an improvement. So, thank you very much. So, the first person that indicated was Jane.
Yeah, thank you. We don't have a lot of time, so I am going to be extremely brief. What I would like to know, what data have we looked at and how are we going to analyse why we are so low? It's really great, the work that you're doing, but I think it's really important that we know that. Also about retention, really important. We cannot be, as I think it was Tom, I think, that mentioned, we can't just be the place. That means getting local people involved. People who are living here, working here, got their roots here. Business will stay here. I'd also like to know about the, I forgot what word you used, do you know, AI? I don't just want it to do my housework, by the way. It's actually, how does this affect the number of jobs that we create? Because we do need to get jobs for everyone. What impact of these kind of industries do they have on the local high street, on the footfall? Because we know a lot of businesses, and I will claim a little bit here, like my business, because nobody's walking around, you don't get people walking through the door because we're working from home. So, we've got to look about how this fits in to the whole thing. But absolutely great work, absolutely brilliant. Regarding the MCA, I would like to know how we actually shape and form the government policies that are coming so they do fit what our city needs. We're not, as I use this analogy, kind of squeezing everybody into a size eight when we're not. Because that is the moment, what it's like with all the funding streams. So, I'll shut up now.
Shall I take those points? So, on the footfall point, I think that we are seeing definitely a positive number of businesses that want to locate in the city centre, actually. And I do think that in itself does create footfall in the city centre. I appreciate it's not just about the city centre. I think high streets is a different matter. We know that retail and hospitality businesses are struggling. You know, we've discussed that in previous committee meetings. So, yes, there are startups in retail and hospitality businesses that would normally be on local high streets, but that is definitely an area that is struggling at the minute. On AI and, yeah, I'll try that. I mean, another programme that we've been actively involved with is a productivity programme, which Joseph mentioned. That is around productivity measures in businesses and increasing digital adoption in businesses. And actually, the number of jobs created through that programme is very promising because generally what's happening is businesses introduce productivity measures, but they've put skilled people who are working in the business on other things in the business that are more, you know, income generating. And we see that time and time again with that programme. I don't know, Dash might have a far better analogy on AI in particular.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my company is dealing with the same problems that you're seeing right now, right? And so, we're bringing machine learning and AI in so that you can understand the data a lot better, actually understand what's going on, and then action off the back of that. So, actually, a lot of the problems that we're helping companies solve right now have to do with footfall. And how do we capitalise on the footfall that's happening? How do we know when it's likely to be busy or when it's likely to be quiet so that we can send out promotions and get more people through the door? Or manage the staff better so that we can reduce the costs at that given period of time? So, I think really what the machine learning and AI is doing is it's enabling you to maximise those margins, maximise that profit and then create those jobs because you're reinvesting that money into your business in a better way. If that helps. We can talk about your footfall problem.
The last thing was just about the data. And I think the fact that the data is moving in the right direction after being in the same position for quite a number of years is showing that we are on the right trajectory. And I think all the stakeholders involved in the presentation today agree that there is still so much more to do. But it does feel like the data and that move up, as Martin said, you know, it's moving in the right direction. Still lots to do, but those things in the ecosystem, like access to investment and acceleration and all of those other things are helping that kind of progress on the data aspect. Thank you.
Thanks, Yvonne. So, we've got a number of people indicating to share them out equally. We'll go Barbara, Paul, Curtis, Minesh and then Tom.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, yeah, I'm really impressed with what you're doing. I mean, the impression I've got is sort of individuals have created a critical mass which allows you to do all this innovative work in our benefit. And the thing that seems to allow you to be so effective is we've got very short decision chains. Whereas with the council and any sort of local government, we know the decision chains are very, very long, so momentum's lost and initiatives are lost. So, well done in finding your way around that. But it's really, Tom, you worried me because you said the problem is we need to retain the businesses in Sheffield. We know some of the issues. Oh, sorry, was it, I've got, sorry, Andy, yes, I've got it. Sorry, my apologies. You know, and we know some of the issues like skills, but what don't we know about? I mean, there's mention about, you know, sort of giving, oh gosh, subsidies to allow businesses to come here. You know, but what else is lacking that we do need to know about as a council? Thank you.
So, when I talk about retaining companies, I'm talking about retaining those sort of spin-out companies deeply based in science. So, Yvonne alluded to wet lab space. We've gone and interviewed all of our founders and it's quite simply that there isn't a space to put their business in Sheffield. So, at the moment, we have a number of companies that are incubated within the university campus. We've switched them into cupboards and labs and things like that where they don't quite fit. And it is a joint problem. So, you could have directed the same question to Tom at Tech Parks because, you know, what our founders are all telling us is that they want laboratory space within the city centre, close to the campuses of the two universities, so they can access the capital equipment there. That is their dream. And when you look at the cities that are doing rather well of this, they have these innovation districts closely coupled to universities. And so, really, that retention and scaling of these jobs, which, by the way, can't be done from home, so they do come in and then they do walk around and use the shops and everything, is very much a priority of both, you know, myself and Tom at Tech Parks. So, that's my focus on how to retain these companies. It really is simply a space issue rather than a skills gap for them.
I find that disappointing in some ways because, I mean, it takes a long time to create suitable spaces then, doesn't it? I mean, they can't, Alexis, you said that you'd started ones. How long did it take? Sort of assuming that plots of land and all the rest of it could be overcome if it got banned in the meantime?
I fear I'm about to go down the rabbit hole of a dark history. A laboratory, a laboratory is a kitchen with a bit more sophisticated kit in it. So, you can put a laboratory, for broad reasons, in any pre-existing building. We put ours in a warehouse. And it worked brilliantly well. Business model's a bit flawed, but we won't talk about that now. So, you could do it quite quickly, months. Tom, do you want to?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so we were able to convert several of our spaces at the Technology Parks from offices to lab spaces. Lab spaces for a couple of the spin-outs that approached us post-Covid. And that was literally removing carpet and screening the floor and calling it a lab, you know. There's a bit more sophistication in the model we're looking at at the moment, but we've identified a couple of spaces within the city centre, close to the city centre. And we're working with private sector developers on a proposal to bring some wet labs. There is some hesitancy because it's not a model that developers recognise. There are big developers. We are Pioneer Group, Brumwood SciTech. There's big examples nationally of how that kind of private developer lab space model has worked. But it's something new to the city and with all new things, there's challenges and kind of scepticism and just the fear of the unknown. So, we're trying to take a lot of people on the journey. But it's a huge demand and it's like sand slipping through your hands. You know, the longer this takes, the more likely these businesses can't, they're not going to hang around. They're going to uproot theirselves, their businesses, their families, and they're going to have to move to Cambridge because things will just be so much easier there for them. So, it's a big challenge we're facing. because things will just be so much easier there for them. So, it's a, it's a big challenge we're facing.
Yes, so basically, short decision chains to sort of speed up the process, whatever it is. No, thank you very much, Yvonne. That's really helpful.
Thanks, guys. Uh, Paul?
Thank you. Uh, thanks, everybody for coming in. It's a really good, it's really eloquent and intelligent speeches. So, I, I just wanted to ask about, so I'll start where Alexis says that we, we want, we want anyone to think they can start a business. And, um, and so the busi- the, the, the work that I'm hearing about, it is impressive, but it's all very much, you know, graduate-based skills, science, innovation. But lots of entrepreneurs are not graduates, lots of businesses are not in those fields. Um, and love to, love to give my own examples because I carelessly mentioned Opera the other week and it kept cropping up. But, you know, like shops or tradespeople or, you know, whatever really, but, um, you know, they, they might not be people who are used to engaging, you know. They might be people who are not connected, like someone who's just come through a university or whatever it would be. Um, they might not be trusting of organisations that they could get support from. There's also talking about premises and, you know, talking about labs. There was a, there was an interesting tweet from someone the other week who'd been trying to find shop and office premises in Hillsborough. And, um, and I think the problem that, that she highlighted is reflected across the country and even on Fargate, where basically distant landlords, premises that have been closed for five years, some of them in, in some cases 20 years, couldn't find the landlord. Finding the landlord through land registry, then the landlord, you know, they didn't want to provide leases that were workable for that business, you know, those problems. So, yeah, how, how is the ecosystem going to help those businesses, please?
Yes, so the landlord issue is, is a national issue and, and certainly removes kind of, you know, the immediate landlord and the ability to be able to find the immediate landlord. It is very difficult. Completely agree that that is an issue. Um, the other point around, um, access for support for people who are not graduates, that's absolutely in the territory of the Launchpad Programme. That programme is the front door for business support in Sheffield and provides support to businesses. You know, we're starting up, um, as Ruth mentioned, you know, uh, businesses on social media and being able to help them grow and, and work in communities where people are interested in setting up. Ruth, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but that absolutely is what the Launchpad Programme is about.
Yeah, um, I, I think, just listening there, one of the things that came to mind was how do we, what, how do we define business? Because, you know, we have a number of ethnic minority, uh, people who are doing business in their back bedrooms, um, and actually getting them out and engaging with business Sheffield in order to grow their business is something really important. The, the mentoring, again, we've, you know, we spoke about mentoring. I think mentoring, um, for businesses, um, so they can actually see what, how their business can actually grow is, is, is quite key and it's quite important to actually have access to these resources, people, companies, businesses, et cetera. So, yeah, I think it's, uh, it's really important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Unless anybody else is coming in on that, we've got councillor Crossland and then we'll go to councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think the presentation was fantastic. Um, I do think that the uh, business startup and the way businesses start up is on a massive sort of, uh, sort of cusp of change. And because knowledge and skills, I don't think is a hurdle anymore because of AI. So, I'll give you an example. Uh, last night in my spare time at 10pm, um, I decided to play around with AI and I made an app out of Python and Visual Basic. I've never used those coding languages before. I've, the only coding experience I have is customising my old MySpace page with CSS when I was 14 years old. So, knowledge is no longer a competitive ad- advantage, but vision and innovation is, I think. So, and access to people with experience as well. So, we can actually put those in, in, put people's ideas into practice. So, I'd like to hear what people think about how we as a city can prepare for this massive change? Um, what we're already doing? And how do you see what has been outlined in the presentation? Uh, helping us to kind of cope and adapt to, to what's going to be a massive earthquake in how businesses are start, starting and, and running?
That's an easy one for you.
See, you've silenced him. Does anybody want to take? Joseph says he's laughing.
Yeah, and I, I suspect this will answer most of your questions, but I'll have a go. And I'd start by saying, I think when we were talking recently, we were talking about problems we're looking at and we talked about innovation, we talked about entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship. And I just want to be really clear about that. When we talk about that, we're not always talking about the translational research projects, BR and E. What we're saying is, is actually, that's what's just as important for our foundational economy, it's important for our startups. And some of the things we're looking at is how do we identify and support founders who are excluded from the current growth problems? Or potentially want to start a business but don't have a business idea? Because actually, you don't have to have the two linked together. So, I think, I should be really clear, when we are looking at these things and we're talking about future provision and things we're looking to improve, we are taking into account how we reach into those different individuals, those different communities. Those people who potentially, as you say, don't need the knowledge gap, but they might need the connections, the networks, the links in, the things that Tom and the Science Network do is a brilliant example of this, where they have a, a large set of different networking events that anybody can go to. And then they link in with different founders, different individuals, different stages of their life cycle, and they learn from each other. And I think enabling that type of activity is what's going to be key to allowing different individuals to enter into these types of markets. So, that's just my two penance from the AHPCA.
Okay, then we've got councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much for coming in today and thanks for all you're doing in the, in the city to create jobs and create wealth here. Um, I've got a few questions. Um, the, the first relates to the final, uh, few words on the slide in front of us, which says about prioritisation of investment culture is critical. I wondered if within that, does there need to be prioritisation of investment in areas of current and emerging strengths? So, is it actually that we're saying it's not only we want to be the best place to start a business, but we want to start a bit, best place to start a business in digital, in biomedical technology, in creative industries? And really kind of homing on our current and emerging strengths. So, any thoughts on that would be good. Second question was around the role of, of financing and investment, and particularly the role of the British Business Bank, um, which is headquartered, uh, here in Sheffield. And they don't seem to feature much in the conversation, not just what we've heard today, but frankly, in general, in sort of the life of the city. Um, you know, does it have the independence, the remit, the aspiration needed to support startups and scale-ups in, in Sheffield and South Yorkshire? And if not, why not? What more could it do to work with you to crowd in institutional investment and, um, and money from, from pension funds and then venture capital? And then I suppose sort of the third sort of bit to touch upon is, you know, it's clear that this ecosystem is, exists and has been built by the work of you. And it's a, you know, there's features of that around funding advice guidance. Other parts of it clearly are around what makes Sheffield an attractive place to not just work in and grow your business in, but to live in. And we heard that, you know, quite eloquently from yourself, Dash, you know. And so I think this is where it touches back to the City Goals work. You know, what's that overarching vision for Sheffield? So that it's not just the best place to grow your business, but it's the best place to live, to work, to raise your family, to grow old in. And that, for me, all has to kind of sing around a particular narrative that we're the city that is the best place to innovate, to create, to make. That's the story of Sheffield now and always has been. You know, 110 years ago, a guy called Harry Brearley goes down to a wet lab at Portland Works and innovates and creates a, a product that was called then Rust Nor Stain. Turns into stainless steel, changes the world. And now there's innovating labs going on at Portland Works in a different capacity entirely. But, you know, that spirit of entrepreneurial innovation in Sheffield has always been there. And you're sort of the, the, you know, right at the cutting edge of it now. And I think there's a broader economic story we can tell around Sheffield, around innovation, creation and making and doing things differently. And I think that everything you say here needs to come out of that City Goals piece of work as that comes through.
Uh, I'm sure there'll be people who want to come in on different elements. Do you want to start, Malcolm? Yeah, so Andy and Tom?
Uh, I'll try and touch on each of those points, Tom, if I can. Um, so on the, um, investing in areas of strength, I think, you know, what we've seen from our journey from University of Sheffield about creating these companies, I think I've showed you the range of sectors that they exist in. Part of that then is responding as those start to grow. I think you can try and seed a cluster and pick the wrong one and miss, or we can see what develops. Because some of these are down to success of one or two companies and it's kind of binary, yes or no, whether they stay and scale. If they fail, they fail to raise money, they fail to succeed, then actually we've, we've missed it. So, part of it is actually thinking about the assets we've got. We have a city centre. And this is my, obviously my, my soapbox, but to seed, start companies in, start the scaling process. But we have advanced manufacturing districts where you can scale and you can start seeing clustering of large-scale businesses. And so I think one of the advantages that we, we could potentially see is a city for starting and growing, but actually then out of the city or, or sort of on the outskirts where, um, you can respond to this clustering. Actually, you do need to be able to build quite a large shed to manufacture some of these things. On the British Business Bank, obviously I don't, I don't, I don't work for them, but I have had a few conversations with them, particularly at the start of the Northern Gritstone journey. Um, I think they do understand the needs that we've got. You know, we have things like the Northern Powerhouse Investment Fund. We do have their support to raise funds. You know, they're more about funding the funder. What we've got to do a better job of is encouraging those investment managers to want to start funds here. And as they see the deal flow grow, there's an obvious attraction to starting your funding here. And that's where we need to then make sure we bring British Business Bank in as a, as a Sheffield institution, you know, at the end of West Street. Um, finally, absolutely get your point about growing Sheffield as a place to live. Um, I think, you know, I'm a resident of Sheffield. I think most of us are around the table. You know, I think myself is a resident of Sheffield who happens to work for the university. Um, I talked to a number of our, our spin-out companies and actually they are saying the same thing. You know, some of them are trying to attract international talent as well as develop skills from people that, that already, already live here. Um, and they do have that same conversation, you know, do you want to go to San Francisco to work for a tech company? Or do you want to come to Sheffield? Some of the people they're employing make that choice. Um, so this is all part of that growing the economy, growing, um, the businesses in Sheffield to help solve all of this.
I just want to jump in on the, um, the narrative. So, Andy's just highlighted, I think it's, it's hard because I see that we're good at lots of different things, but from a kind of national perspective, you want to be known for some kind of specialism. So, we're part of the UK Science Park Association Network. You know, whenever I say from Sheffield Technology Park, they immediately conflate it with that, with the manufacturing park and, and the kind of innovation district out there. Um, so it's important to have a narrative and be able to kind of differentiate. But for me, uh, the kind of coalface, if you like, I see that we're world-class in lots of different things and it's hard to say, well, if we're going to be manufacturing, we can't be life sciences, you know, that's nonsense. We can be good at everything. So, it comes back to that narrative of, um, you know, being able to succeed at whatever it is you're trying to achieve, you know. Um, British Business Bank, we've had limited engagement, but you're right, they outsource their kind of delivery work to, to other partners. So, MPF, we've had a lot of people, uh, at the technology parks, received investment through Mercy Investment Fund there. Um, something I think is really important, you mentioned the narrative of being a history of innovators. There were a few very well-known innovators. The rest of the, the kind of population were the workers at these places. And they were industrialised workforce, huge numbers, you know, across even now the public sector, academia. Um, you know, we had the steel and the mining, all the industries. They had limited ambition. They were very good at what they did on a day-to-day basis, but it was a job for life. It was like, keep your head down, get on. You might get a company car, you might rise up to management, you'll have a good pension. And you didn't have the opportunity to become an entrepreneur. And just a quick anecdote, we had someone come to us with a absolutely solid business idea a few years ago. And, you know, we said, what's stopping you? And she said, I just feel like I'm not that kind of person. And that's the kind of mindset, you know, her parents, her friends, no one knew what it meant to run a business. They didn't understand, you know, whether it's hairdressing or whether it's leading a world-class innovative kind of research translation. We need to empower people to feel like they can. And what, what is interesting, just as, as a final point is, I don't like kind of separating people into, into generations, but the, the younger people we're working with, the kind of 18 to 24-year-olds, they're all over this. They know what side hustles are. They've been brought up, um, kind of knowing they're going to have to make their own money at some point. And, you know, through the gig economy perversely, have been exposed to self-employment from a very early age, from probably their first job. Um, so, you know, talking about fast, fast responses and kind of turnaround times of things, that's happening, you know. And it's, it's up to organisations of that mind that can stay quite agile outside of the council. But we need a long-term strategy with, with the ability to make short-term pivots. And I think when we're kind of setting a three-year project, we need to recognise by kind of month nine, that's going to be out of date. And we need to be able to shift it within its own parameters and scope.
Sorry, I just want to add real quickly on a couple of those things, kind of just falling off the back. I think one, like going into the vision and what you all are thinking about from a vision perspective. Another thing that's really important for startups is distribution channels. And yes, machine learning and AI is, you know, kind of sweeping us away in a lot of ways. But this is a journey for everyone. It's not just a journey for the startup community. It's not just a journey for what we're trying to build here from a startup community. It's for all the, the little businesses that are here as well. And so I think being able to create those distribution channels and being able to bring that journey through the entire city is one way that is going to make Sheffield like a really amazing place to start a business. Because then you're going to have these places where you can trial things with local businesses. You can get the traction you need to go build that bigger brand or, or move across the rest of the UK or the rest of the world. Um, and that, the, that's really important. Um, and I do think there's an element of the funding side of things as well and how we think about investment in startups in the region. There's, you know, already stereotypes, so to say, that, that are they're outside of London and outside of the US, that you're a lot more risk averse, right? So, the terms that we're getting, the money that we're getting are actually prohibiting us from being able to meet those big, those big visions, um, which are going to attract more people to come to Sheffield because you want to be the hub that has these amazing companies coming out of it, right? Um, so I guess that feeds back to the vision, like, do you, do you want to have these big companies? Or do you want to have the smaller companies? And what does that look like? And then just looking across, what are the impacts of that from how you get your traction and bringing the whole city along the journey? To also, how do you facilitate and make people a little less risk averse to get the terms that we need to hit the big, the big view?
That's great. Thank you very much. Um, just mindful of time, so we'll take a question from councillor Notte, just the last question, then we'll wrap up. One observation from me, uh, I think it was Tom mentioned about the British Business Bank actually is in Sheffield. Maybe for the work programme next year, might be a good idea to invite them in, more about that, possibly. Anyway, councillor Notte.
Thank you, Chair. Um, there's a lot of challenges in front of us as a council and the city in terms of how we shape our economy and everything else going forwards. And one of the things we're trying to do is create a stronger, more circular local economy. And there's something really intrinsic about the nature of startups that feeds directly into that because no one's starting a business on Monday and floating it on Tuesday. And so thank you very much for all of your work on that. But one of the other big challenges we've got facing us is how we transition to a greener economy and how we hit net zero in 2030, which is seven very short years away. When businesses come to you, um, how much of the conversation revolves around what the projected environmental footprint of that business is going to be going forward?
Do you want to stay? I'll just give it. Well, um, it's a good, it's a good question and, you know, we're, we're not only a kind of support organisation, we run a building as well. So, we're looking at our own net zero priorities because that forms a big part of our onward client residence, you know. So, they're coming to us now and it's starting to be pushed into their, uh, kind of radar a bit more because of their onward client base. So, when they're going into tenders, these kind of net, net zero or carbon credentials are starting to be asked about. And they need to have that data, usually from their landlords such as those. But also their kind of, uh, you know, server providers or whatever it is, they need to have this kind of data. I think that will only increase. So, it's kind of just, you know, nudging people in the right direction to understand. And then there's, there's the classic thing, you need to understand and then you need to implement, you know. You need to kind of get a plan and action plan together. So, we're working with our clients to do. So we're working with our clients to do that. But I think that's actually coming from the onwards kind of imposition within these kind of contracts and tender processes that they're seeing from their customers.
Okay, Alexis, you want to wrap up?
I'm not going to wrap up, Chair, that would be inappropriate, I would leave Yvonne to do that. But on data, councillor Dan, you were talking about data. And I've just reminded myself of this. Eighty-nine per cent of businesses in Sheffield employ nine or less people. Our economy is made up of micro-sized businesses. That is in line with UK averages. When you look at our business base elsewhere, the one thing that we do lack is a larger number of larger private sector employers. And I raise that not to challenge, but to acknowledge that there is a tension. Many of us, if not all of us, focus on our communities, our high street. And because that's important to local residents and that's important about the lived experience. But equally, if we're going to grow our economy and create more vibrant high streets in the city centre and in Hillsborough and in other district centres, we might want to look at the fact that we don't have as many large private sector employers as other cities do. I will send a link to Yvonne and Di because we go back and forth on this. The data's there and that's the differentiation between Sheffield and other UK cities. We lack larger private sector employers, which is why the work that Andy and Tom and others are doing may be seen as being removed from the real economy, but it's essential to strengthen the real economy. Thank you.
Just in terms of wrapping up then, I suppose the reason that we wanted to spend so much time with the committee today to kind of unearth this is because we see it as a really clear priority for Sheffield going forward in terms of creating growth, inclusive, good, fair Sheffield kind of based growth by both attracting people in, talent and startups and kind of indigenous. So somebody said, I think it might have been yourself, councillor, that the decision chain can be quite long. And I suppose we want a faster decision chain. There might be opportunities in the next 12 months where we can act quite swiftly to support some of these interventions and move things forward quickly. So we wanted to give you the grounding of kind of what's out there at the moment. And also to say, in terms of what Yvonne was talking about, in terms of the narrative, I think we do need to be bolder on startup. You can't really see it in our priorities so strongly. We don't talk about it all the time. We really need to be much bolder in terms of owning this as a city. And that best place to start a business is very ambitious, but it's not out of reach. If you hear what it's like to be in the ecosystem, it does feel like the best place to start a business. It's just this, we're not doing it enough, it's not scaled enough, it's on uncertain funding, we've not got the longevity. So I think there's some critical things that this committee can lead on next year in terms of shaping the narrative, embedding this in our kind of policies and the way we're thinking, where we can attract funding or pilot things or add some scene code money to make things happen really quickly. So thank you for taking the time to listen today and thank you, partners, for joining us on this. And hopefully it's the start of a beautiful journey.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. So, members, we're asked to note the presentation. Are we all happy to note it? Duly noted, as an onerous task, isn't it? So thank you very much. As I said before, fantastic presentation. Colleagues, that's the last item on our agenda today. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank members and officers for the work that's been done over this last year. And particularly the collaborative way that we've approached this particular part of the council's work. So thank you very much. Good luck in the elections, whoever's standing, and see you on the other side. Thank you.
Chair, was it possible also just to say on behalf of the committee, thanks very much for chairing our meetings as well?
Appreciation, society.